All right, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Union County Council together for tonight, Tuesday, October the 11th. We'll begin tonight with the invocation by Councilman Sinclair and the pledge of allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Lord, thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you, Lord, for another opportunity to serve you, for being so good to us, for loving us, Lord. And, Lord, I want to... Lord just asked a special request tonight, Lord, for Mr. Mayfield, Lord, who's our fire coordinator. I ask you, Lord, that you'd touch him, help him, Lord, as he's battling sickness, and, Lord, if there's others in our community that are sick and suffering, and, Lord, even out of our community, God, I'd ask you, Lord, to touch them in a special way. Lord, as we enter into this meeting, I just ask you, Lord, that every decision that's made would be the best benefit for Union County, Lord. And, Lord, for everything you do, we'll be sure to praise you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please? Did you phone Tracy?
Tracey Campbell, District 1.
We're going to call her if you'll give us just a minute. Ben Scott.
I can go ahead.
Ben's going to call again.
Well, Tucker, District 2, will be noted as absent. David Sinclair, District 3.
Present.
Ben Ivy, District 4.
Present.
Carolyn Rutherford, District 5.
Present.
John Flood, District 6.
Present.
Tracy Campbell.
Tracey Campbell, District 1.
Present.
Hey, Tracy.
Hey, how are you?
Good, good luck tonight. Okay, Council, you have the minutes from the meeting of September 13th. I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Motion, all right. Second, all in favor of approving the minutes from September. Let's have a roll call. District 1?
Yes.
District 2? District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
Okay, we have service awards tonight. We have James Bullware. Anyone that could take his award to him, we'll make sure he gets it. Danny Enman. Anyone want to volunteer? Okay. Ann Dehart. Volunteers, anyone? Okay. Makia Brandon. Linda will take Makia's, okay. And also, Makia has 20 years of service. Sue Cudd has 25 years. If you make sure she gets that. Thank you. We're going to have a presentation now from Phil Bell about the Main Street holiday kickoff.
I don't see Phil here. He's not here.
We'll move him to the bottom of the list, then. Next on the list is Mr. Michael Taylor.
Mr. supervisor, the other day when we spoke, you weren't sure if it was three minutes or five minutes. It was five minutes when I used to come down here. What is it now?
Well, if it was five, then we'll give you five tonight.
Then we're going to have five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. My name is Michael Taylor, and I just, I want to give you guys a little bit of background where I'm coming from. My family's been in Union County for over 200 years. I'm a Vietnam veteran and a member of a Gold Star family. And for those of you that don't know what a Gold Star family is, it's when a member has lost their life in a foreign war. I fought my brother in Vietnam until he was killed in action on September the 7th, 1968. Today just happens to be Captain George Dennis Taylor's birthday. He'd be 79 years old, and I just want to say I was proud of him. Now, I want to get down to a little bit of business. As all you... Well, I don't know if all of you know or not, some of you weren't on the council when Frank Hart threw me out, wouldn't let me come back down and speak. So now I've been allowed by the supervisor to come down and speak. So I need to do a little bit of catching up here. I'm sure that my family went before me that helped settle this county would be just as disappointed in this council and in this county as what I am today. All my family's already passed. They're not here to stand with me, so I stand by myself on it. But like I say, they helped us settle this county, and they worked in public service in this county to help make it grow, the schoolteachers, law enforcement, to get all sorts of different jobs. Now, for the past 30 some odd years, I've been living here since 1980, so I've been able to observe this, permanently, that is. The supervisor's office, the sheriff's office, has used the... the people in these offices have used these offices for their benefit, their embellishment. All I have to do is go over the number of elected leaders that have sat either in that chair or in the sheriff's chair and remind you of how many's gone to prison, how many is guilty of embezzlement. The sheriff's office even had a suicide involved in it. There's been a lot of crime committed by the county leaders in this county, and you guys failed to do any observation on... You don't even look at these people. You have let Frank Hart do whatever he wants to. Now Frank Hart set himself up in a permanent job because he was fixing to get ousted of this job. He knew it, just good and well. So he set himself up to take a magistrate job, and when he did, he and Jeff Bailey decided to reorganize the courthouse, get a better office uptown here, while that jail is over there, and it's full of filth and mold and disrespectful people. I've been in that jail. David Taylor put me in that jail. He had to pay me $2,000 an hour to stay in that jail. The county was responsible for it. Of course, the insurance paid it, but that's just another sheriff. And the sheriff we got now, he doesn't care anything about that. What he wants is a nice office. He wants to go on TV in his polo shirt or his carpenter work shirt and talk to people about vent no trespassing signs, while at the same time, we got people over here escaping from jail. He can't catch them. He can't catch them for a week. He had a teenage girl here in town, from what I understand. He couldn't catch her for several days. I'm going to tell you, this guy has no experience in law enforcement. He's only in there to better himself. That's the reason he keeps jumping on TV all the time. I tried to talk to him when he first went in. He plainly lied to me, straight up and now. He won't never get a chance to do that again. I'm going to tell you right now, and if he was sitting here, which I wish he was sitting here tonight, I would be glad to tell him that he gets no more chances to lie to Michael Taylor.
You have one minute, sir.
I got one minute, whatever. If you guys want to let these officials get by with this kind of stuff, then sit up here and let them do it. Also, we've got a sheriff that's got a conflict of interest. Unless things have changed, his wife works for Dom Eduris Law Firm. That needs to be stopped immediately. She's got no business working for a law firm that participates in court actions either against or with the sheriff of Union County. Oh, another thing. I would like to see our sheriff wear the designated uniform that's designed for that office. Now, I'm going to tell you, when I was in the military, of course, a lot of people wasn't able to serve in the military. There's a lot of people who have physical defects. If you got a physical defect, you don't need to be a sheriff. But if you don't wear that uniform, in my opinion, you're a coward. Because that uniform, when he steps out of that car, that uniform demands respect. He don't have to say a word. When he gets out in his little polo shirts or his little work shirt or something, people going to be just like me. Give a flip about him, and get back in his car. He brings no authority out of here.
Thank you, sir.
Do something, make him wear a uniform.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
If it's all right with him, it's all right with me.
So you've been in this county since 1980. You've witnessed a lot of corruption. You come from a decorated family. You've got vast knowledge and all these things that's went on. Have you ever ran for sheriff or supervisor or county council?
Let me tell you something. I'm assumed to be 75 years old. What this county does not need is another old, good old white boy running things.
I was just curious. I mean, it seems like you have a wealth of knowledge.
Because I'm telling you, this county, I don't know how you guys are able to fool these electors the way you do. I think a lot of it has to do with what church you go to. So everybody visits churches, but no, I'm too old, I'm not in good shape. I've served my country, and I served it proudly.
I was just curious.
And my brother died.
Yes, sir.
For right for you people to sit in here tonight and participate in this.
And we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
The very idea for a sheriff to disrespect this county by, first of all, dressing the way he dresses, second of all, by not telling the truth, and third, he can't do his job anyhow. He can't catch a escape from his own jail that's in the county. I mean, give me a break. Something's going to have to be done, I don't know what, but somebody's going to have to quit basing these leaders on what church you go to.
Now, thank you, sir.
I'll tell you something else, too. Jesus Christ has given you all your answers to your prayers. The only thing of it is, you don't recognize it. When people go to jail, when they're found for taking bribes, when they embezzle, when there's suicide in the sheriff's office, and I could go on and name several more, you're not listening to what God's trying to tell you. You stand up here and pray, but you don't listen. You may not like the answer, but you're not listening. So if you're going to ask for God's advice or His blessing, you need to open your eyes and listen to what He's trying to tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
He's shown you for the last 30 years.
Thank you so much. All right. Is the report from the Livestock Association? I don't see Ricky. I don't see Leanne.
Phil's here now.
Sorry.
Phil's here now. You can go back up.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bell?
Yeah. Fire me.
What do you say? You look like it.
Oh, okay, John, sorry. Excuse us, sir. You sure are handsome, though.
She looks like you, sir.
Thank you, all right. At this time, we would consider requests to fill any vacant budgeted positions. Do we have any? All right, if not, we're going to consider requests for capital funds. These are funds that have been budgeted, and as a capital expense, they must be reported to council.
I would like to request the capital funds that have been set aside to start the renovations on the old jail for the visitor center. Some of the work has begun already with inmate help, but we have other things that, of course, inmates are not capable of doing, like getting environmental tests and different things that we're going to need some of the funds to get that started.
All right. Mr. Ray, you in?
It was $35,000 set aside in the budget, so I don't know how you guys know we worked that.
What's on your list, Dave? You got that list?
Yeah, first, I think in the first phase, it's going to be $6,500, isn't that what you said? Yes. It's budgeted under tourism at the $35,000. All right? Okay? We don't need to vote on that, do we? Since it's approved?
No, we didn't.
We do, sorry, okay?
Capital expenditures under the law.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll have a roll call to approve expenditures.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Entertain a motion for expenditures to renovate the city jail.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, second.
County jail. County jail. City does not have a...
Well, it's the old... the old jail. We'll call it the old jail. I like that.
Robert Mills jail.
Robert Mills jail, okay. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Carolyn. District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
And District 6?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Christina, you want to go next? Okay.
Hi, I'm Christina McDowell with Alcohol and Drug. I requested $11,000 during the budget process for five new desktop computers, and we're ready to purchase now. We have a quote for $9,126.80 that I would like to request from the capital expenditure account.
Thank you. Is there a motion that we approve this?
I'll make it.
Have a motion, Dave. Thank you, second.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Call for... Yes? Before you vote, are you the program that's in Lockhart?
We're not currently in Lockhart. We're short on staff right now, but we do have a sign up that we can come in. We have our number up. We receive calls. We can do visits to Lockhart.
Because we haven't seen you in a long time. I just wanted...
Yes, ma'am. We do not have the staff to come to Lockhart. When we were in Lockhart...
Well, we have because you're requesting five new computers for this expenditure money.
No, ma'am, I'm not requesting it for Lockhart. I'm requesting five new desktop computers for our office here.
That's what I'm saying. Do you... So you're saying that you do not have... you have staff to cover those five computers here in...
We have the staff that we have here, yes, ma'am.
Okay, then why can't one of them come to Lockhart?
Because we... a clinical staff has to come to Lockhart. There are several different physicians.
Yes, ma'am.
In an agency, and, for example, our administrative assistant cannot do clinical work. You have to have...
So out of these five people, you don't have an extra clinical?
No, ma'am, I do not. But it is on demand, so if someone calls, and we have our number, and Ms. Connie does too, and we have our number posted.
Yes, ma'am.
If someone calls, we will be sure to serve Lockhart.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, call for the vote on the motion to spend $9,126.80.
Just a minute. I need a second.
Miss... I think Miss Carolyn. Miss Carolyn did, yes. Excuse me.
Okay, Miss Carolyn, please. That much.
Yeah. All right, call for the vote, District 1?
Yes.
District 2 is absent. District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
Would you like to have another question, ma'am?
No, sir. I'm just wondering, since one of Ms. Campbell's constituents was questioning the vote about her voting for it, but it's okay, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's a regular thing.
All right, the final consideration for capital funds is $55,000 for the Goldville substation. We had a resolution on that last month. Members, you have a copy of that in your packet. The resolution was adopted the 13th of September. I'd entertain a motion to approve the capital funds for the Goldville station.
Make the motion.
Ben Ivy, and second.
Second.
Carolyn Rutherford, okay. Call for vote, District 1?
Yes.
District 2 is absent. District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
And District 6?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carolyn, could we please designate where those funds are coming from?
Yes, we did. We designated that the funds for the Goldville substation will come from the Economic Development Fund, number 327.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there reports tonight from any of our elected officials?
I have a report that we can just... I guess we can just follow up on it.
Okay.
Rusty can probably share a little bit of information on it, but the county was in the process of redoing the county road list, and a couple of the roads that were in the Mount Vernon estate were not in the county road list, and we, as part of the adjustments, we decided to accept a couple of roads. They met the county's policy as far as what the policy says has to, you know, what the requirement is for them to be taken in, and I just wanted to say that I have had several people stop by and say how much they appreciate it, how good it looked down there, so I just wanted to recognize Rusty and his group and tell them we appreciated the work you're doing down there.
Excellent.
I think it was Rock Ridge.
Okay.
Ralph Ridge.
Ralph Ridge, yeah. Okay. All right.
I need to ask something.
Thank you, Councilman Sinclair.
I'll do it, but I'm still having all these complaints about the trees hanging over on the roads in the streets.
Okay.
When it raining, I mean, people complaining, and I got complaints, too, but I'll talk to you about that later. But in my area, there's trees, like when it rains, they brush the top of your car.
Yeah.
So I'm having a lot of complaints about trees, so I don't know who I need to...
Okay.
Do you see the street? Or can...
City. All of them see the street.
City has to deal with that. County roads, county state roads.
So, yeah.
I'm learning.
We're learning. That's right, we all are. All right, anything else from or for elected officials? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have one resolution for tonight. Council members, you have this. This is a resolution authorizing Union County to submit an application and budget to the South Carolina Department of Transportation to initiate a three-year pilot rural transit program, authorizing Union County to negotiate and finalize terms of an agreement with Senior Services, Inc. of Chester County to provide public transportation services for and on behalf of Union County and other matters related thereto.
Make the motion. We accept this resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Adopted and...
Motion to adopt. Councilman Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Rutherford, okay.
This is a third. Third and finally.
All right, and call for a vote on the trans...
Mr. Russell, this is one reading for adoption.
Okay, thank you. All right, call for the vote, District 1?
Yes.
District 2 is absent. District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, resolution is adopted. Okay, I just have a brief... a couple of brief things for the supervisor's report for this month. Tomorrow morning, Neil McCown and I will be meeting with representatives from Spartanburg Community College at the Detention Center to talk to them about putting a welding program in place for some of our inmates there. And secondly, I'd like to call on Ronnie Wade to talk a little bit about some brand-new hot-off-the-press information regarding our airport.
How about you now? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give you a color.
All right, yeah.
This is... Yeah. How could I get by without one for a win?
That's right.
This is a competitively grant, the money that we gave about years ago when they actually fired the people at the airport, the air traffic controllers, this under Reagan administration. They had a lot of people that went to doing contracts, pilots, but they had about $25 billion against the war for those. Well, about 20 of those billion dollars are going to go to redoing those contracts. The money that we have now is to develop terminals. Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina got one reward last year. So this is something that if you didn't, if you wasn't prepared for it, you don't have a plan to ask for the money. What we're trying to do now is put a plan together. What you're looking at now is not what you're going to build, it's what you're hoping to get to. We have an engineering firm, Michael Baker. I spoke to them the other day. We had a group session with them, and what they're saying is for $5,000, they have to this proposal together so we can have this money. This amount of money is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million. The state of South Carolina also participates if you want a terminal up to $500,000. This project that they have going on will go on for four years. So it would be nice if we could put the proposal in, accept the money, and put those terminals. But even if we can't, we've got four years that this same proposal would be accepted and submitted, so we would have all this together. We mentioned 3,000 square feet. That's what you're going to see on this building, is 3,000 square feet. The contractor mentioned 4,000 square feet. They were worried about how do you promote jobs, which is one of the criteria, how you promote jobs. What I tried to explain to them, we promote jobs by making us work together. The development board, chamber, whoever, here, we can develop a facility there at the airport. We've got meeting rooms. We've got rooms where you can actually have something we promote. Even if they don't go to work at the airport, that don't mean they're not going to work. What we're trying to do is sell this project. But to do this, I need $5,000 to pay these people to do this, and I think Ann come up with an idea of where the money would come from.
She did.
Ann don't tell me all of this. She ain't in here.
I know she guards her money pretty closely when you come in the office, sir.
But anyway, that's the crutch of this.
This is the bipartisan infrastructure law that has been passed and has a total of $25 billion in it, and at least 10% of that money is required to be spent at small airports, such as ours. On the larger airports, it says they can spend no more than 20% of the total grant in large airports, but they have to spend at least 10% in the small airports. So it's a 95% match on whatever the cost of the building, this 3,000-square-foot building ends up to be, and the situation we ran across and the reason I asked Ronnie to be here tonight is that there's a hard deadline of October 24th, 13 days from today, that the application must be submitted to get this... our part of this money.
And let me say this, too. Once we decide we're going to put this money together, this project, even if we're not lucky enough to get the grant, I'm hoping we are, but if we're not, this project will still be drawn out, because really, this is what we're going to wind up doing if we're going to have to do this. I think the airport will be...
Thank you. All right, do we... Yes, Mr. Brandon?
You know, at some point down, we're going to need some... if we can get somebody up to pay for it, you know, we're in the front of this for 60 years.
Yes, sir. It is.
And hopefully, our force is going to be growing, and that's where we get more traffic. We get them there, we're probably going to want, so we can extend the runway, and pretty soon, we're going to be able to, of course, to jet, but that'll be in the future.
that there's a hard deadline of October 24th, 13 days from today, that the application must be submitted to get this, our part of this money.
And let me say this, too. Once we, if we decide we're going to put this money together, this project, even if we're not lucky enough to get to that, I'm hoping we are, but if we're not, this project will still be drawn out because really, this is what we're going to wind up doing if we're going to have to do this. Take the airport.
Thank you. All right, do we, yes, Mr. Brannon?
You know, at some point down, we're going to need some, we can get somebody at the paybar. You know, we're in the front, it takes years of.
Yes, sir. It is.
And hopefully, our airport is going to be growing. And that's where we get, the more, the more traffic we get, then they're, the FAA will probably come to one and we can extend the runway, and pretty soon, we're going to be laying, of course, the jet. But that won't be the future. But these are the steps to get us into.
2020s, yeah. This, this stuff sells nicely into other projects. They're going out at the airport right now to improve our airport facility. And it is important when someone comes to look at a business site in Union County, if they can land at Union County Airport, it really is a big feather in our cap.
Uh, Ms. Ann, where will the funds be coming from?
I think we'll probably go from the operational contingency.
Yeah, okay. Operational, operational contingency.
I'll make the motion, we'll do that.
All right, we have a motion to remove the, excuse me, we have a question.
Ken, the supervisor's office not work with the engineers to reduce the price of that $5,000 a little bit? You can't, the only way we can get through this is to pay these guys $5,000 to light up a smolder.
We have met with them, we've had Zoom meetings with them, and that's the price.
I think that sounds a little bit steep, and to me, look how we're putting off the jail, but yet we want to help out the people that's flying around. We're going to help them out, do whatever. But we want to keep the old jail, just add on to it, instead of bulldozing it down like it already.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, we have a motion to spend $5,000 from the operational contingency for, to do the application for the FAA grant. Is there a second? Do we have a motion to do that, I guess I should say?
Motion.
All right, Mr. Ivy made the motion, second. Dr. Flood does the second. Call for the vote, District 1?
Yes.
District 2 is absent. District 3 is you. District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
Thank you, Ronnie, for putting this together on short order. Are there any committee reports for tonight? Is there any other business to be discussed tonight? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Mr. Ivy, Mr. Sinclair of the second, call for vote, District 1?
Yes.
District 2 is absent. District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6? District 6?
Yes.
Thank you. District 6, the meeting is adjourned.